Recording in progress.
Good evening. My name is Mayor Dennis Maloney. Welcome to the Lewisville, Colorado, City Council Meeting of Tuesday, February 21st, 2023. May we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Maloney?
Here.
Councilmember Lay?
Here.
Councilmember Most?
Here.
Councilmember Dickinson? Mayor Protem Fahey?
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmember Hefner?
Here.
Thank you. Please all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we're going to go to public comments on items on the agenda. And on the consent agenda, first, we have Eric Lund.
This is actually for comments not on the agenda, right?
Correct.
Okay, good. Thank you, Mayor Maloney. I just wanted to make sure that was right. Honorable mayor and council members, staff, Eric Lund at 901 Main Street with the Lewisville Chamber of Commerce. Nice to be here. Just wanted to give you guys a couple of quick updates. Number one, we are organizing a number of subcommittees for different events that are going to be held here in Lewisville. And we would like to invite the public to come and help us plan and give us ideas and give us their input. So we're open and welcome to anybody in the community or especially any of our business community. We have some great events like the 5K Run, Lewisville Taste, and our Pints in the Park. We've got the Prado Lights. We have a lot of great events. So something to really look forward to. And we've already had some great community input. And again, we're just welcome to invite any staff, city staff, or business folks, or community people that would like to participate. And then one other thing, every year, we do the Lewisville Community Directory. We will be doing that again. It's going to be in September when it comes out this year, a little bit later than normal. So it's going to cross over into two years. So we're going to do 2023 and '04. But it will be printed from then on every September. It might come out in August if we get early. It will feature two new apps, one that'll be a map app for every business in Lewisville, which will be really great. That's a brand-new feature. And then, of course, there will be a virtual guide as well as the printed guide, which will be mailed to every single community member here in Lewisville. So we're excited about that. It's a whole new company that's going to be helping us with the publishing, and they're very well-known for doing chamber guides. So it will feature a lot of visitor information as well as relocation information. So look for that. A brand-new guide is going to be great. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Next up, we have Sherri Summer.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Sherri Summer, 910 South Palisade Court. I'm here today to talk to you regarding item D on the Consent Agenda, Resolution 9, Series 2023. This is OSAB's recommendation to Boulder County Parks and Open Space. I would like to ask that this item be removed from the consent agenda and be placed on a regular agenda for discussion. I think, let's see here, OSAB in December made a recommendation by unanimous vote to recommend parcels A, A1 and A2, as well as properties on Paradise Lane to be recommended as their number-one priorities to the county. But if you, and you may not be aware of this, but if you look at your packet, that is not what you're seeing right there in your packet. OSAB made a recommendation. They based it on their open-space criteria, and those properties came up as the top ones. This was not a political decision that they made, but I understand the city attorney asked that those parcels be removed from the open-space recommendations because they pertain to a property that's in their quasi-judicial review. I think that the city attorney's recommendation needs to be explained to the public, especially because we're talking about the open-space tax extension tonight. In the context, I think many, many people in town are very interested in the Open Space Board's recommendations. They're interested in these parcels. This needs to be done with transparency, and I'm fully aware that none of you may be aware of the change of parcel recommendations. But I do think it's extremely important that you take it off tonight and that you let the board exercise their technical skills to recommend parcels. Thank you very much in advance for your consideration.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Cindy?
Excuse me.
Hi, I'm Cindy Bedell. I live at 662 West Willow Street in Lewisville. And I just wanted to mention, when I looked at the agenda this morning, I noticed that under the consent agenda, number D, the map that's in your packet is different than the map that I have, about 2022 recommended acquisition properties that OSAB recommended. So I think that tonight it would not be appropriate to approve this on the consent agenda until you have all the information. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comments? All right, thank you. Next, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there any changes or motions to approve the consent agenda?
Motion approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All disapprove? Okay, the motion approves. We will move on to council informational comments on pertinent items not on the agenda. Do councillors have any pertinent items not on the agenda which they would like to report? Seeing none, we'll move on to the city manager's report.
I'm going to defer tonight to my trusted colleague.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Just a quick update I wanted to share, that next Monday, we will have the next program in the Disaster Education and Outreach Series that the City of Lewisville has been putting on in conjunction with Boulder County and with the Town of Superior. And this is one in a series of six programs so far, and we're working on adding additional programming. And these programs are designed for the entire community to participate, and our goal is to help build resiliency in the community. So we're inviting everyone to attend. The next one on Monday starts at 6:00 PM, and it's in the Rec Center. And the focus will be on wildfire-resistant building and landscaping. And we will also have a remote or Zoom option. It'll be a webinar. And that's posted on the website, the Resilient Lewisville website. So if you go to our webpage, click on the Resilient Lewisville, and you'll see all the information in that series. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you done giving the mic away? Okay. All right, we'll move on to regular business. We'll go to item A, Presentation by the Youth Advisory Board. And it's really great to have the Youth Advisory Board here.
I think we're outnumbered.
The youth will rise. All right. Good evening, everybody. My name is Sam Becker. I'm the chairman of the Youth Advisory Board. And on behalf of the Youth Advisory Board, we're here to present our annual project, which is the Pet Mayor. All right. So like I said, my name is Sam Becker. I'm the chairman. These are my two other LTT members, Lily, my vice-chairman, and Ari Hunt, my secretary. As you can see, we are very, very big. We have members from many schools around the Lewisville area. And we're just a group of youth leaders in Lewisville who are working to get involved in government and help better our community.
All right. So our vision and goals and mission statements of this project that we have, our vision is together, the Youth Advisory Board invites you to participate in our first Pet Mayor election. After all the changes that 2022 brought us, we'd love to elect your furry friend as a positive role model for our small town. And our mission statement is a fun and casual election to spread a sense of community and positive energy throughout the citizens of Lewisville. And our values are community, positivity, collaboration, and respect.
To touch briefly on our end goals, it's mainly community togetherness and joy. But we have two really big internal motivations that sort of decided the Pet Mayor project would be the best one to pursue for this. One is voter registration and education and outreach. Mainly, we want to make sure that all youth and even general population are aware of the importance of voter registration through this Pet Mayor event, especially as COVID-19 and the Marshall Fires made education in that field a lesser priority. Secondly, we want to raise awareness for pet charities and animal shelters, as over 160,000 pets are sent into animal shelters every year in Colorado alone, and 7% of them don't make it out. So we've got to make awareness for that a priority.
All right. So we've already hammered out a brief timeline, and this is going to touch a little bit more in depth on the next slide. It's not showing up. But so, March, in about two weeks, a week, we're going to officially announce the Pet Mayor project through Lewisville Lines of Communication. And then, early April, mid, early to middle April, we're going to start allowing submissions for your pets. So that's going to basically be a photo, a little blurb, any tricks, special talents. If your dog can go catch a frisbee while leaping over water like Air Bud, that kind of stuff is what we're trying to look for. And our hard deadline to get this project done is end-ish of May, because that's when school ends, and then we all leave on summer vacation. So about May 6-ish?
Six?
Six-ish is when we're going to announce the winner of the Pet Mayor project, and then we're hoping to get them into the pet parade by September 4th.
Where are those slides?
Uh-oh. Oh, well, that's okay. Kind of the end thing here is, our whole mission is to help spread a sense of community and kind of help youth around the city bridge into voter registration, involvement in government, and kind of help publicize the city of Lewisville and their government workings. And so on behalf of the Youth Advisory Board, I'd just like to say thank you all for your time and appreciation for this idea.
Thank you for the presentation, and we really appreciate you being on the Youth Advisory Board. I really like the idea that really publicizing community spirit as well as community responsibility and voting. So I think those are excellent messages. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we will take some public comments on this, if there are any public comments. Seeing none. Any council comments? Yes, Councilor Hamilton.
Thank you for that presentation. I love how creative you all are in coming up with ideas to engage the community. And I hope that one day my daughter does something like what you all are doing, because it's so very important. So thank you for that.
Councilor Lay?
My dog is watching right now. And I know she's going to ask when I get home whether she's eligible. So I don't know whether we're barred from doing that or not. I don't know what the rules are. She's pretty grumpy when I don't come through for her. So anyway, what a great, I'm delighted that you're doing this. It's going to be an awful lot of fun. It's a really, it's a good thing for kids and adults. And you're going to get a lot of really competitive adults, I'm just saying. You know that, I suppose, right? All right, you ready for that?
Don't feel any undue pressure from Councilor Lay. Councilor Most?
Yes, Councilor Lay stole my thunder. My question was, can my cat, Nico, Nico the demon cat, be entered into this contest? Yeah, you know what I love about this? I love the fact that it's, you know, we've had so much heaviness in this community for the last couple of years. We've just had a lot of trauma and a lot of difficulty and a lot of complexity. And I think this is really a fun way to get people engaged. And I think, you know, the community could use some fun. So thanks, you guys. This is great. And I'm so glad that you're taking the time to engage with our community and to learn a little bit about public service and all that. So good for you, and thanks so much.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Fahey, please.
Yeah, I will add my thanks and admiration for all of you. I remember going to one of your meetings and expressing my gratitude for you serving on the Youth Advisory Board. And to come up with such a creative, community-promoting event, it just is amazing. And so thank you very much for everything you do on that board. And remember, there is no age limit for applying for other things in the city also. Thank you.
That's a nice plug. All right, seeing no other comments, we'll move on to the next agenda item, item B, Ordinance Number 1850, Series 2023, and ordinance amending sections 3.24 of the Lewisville Municipal Code Regarding the Tax and Fee Business Assistance Program, second reading. And so are there any disclosures by councillors? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing. And start with a staff presentation.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm Rob Zuccaro, Community Development Director for the city. I'm going to do a quick introduction to this item. So staff is presenting this amendment. It's amending Chapter 3.24 of the Municipal Code, which is our Tax and Fee Business Assistance Program, which we commonly refer to as our BAP program. And staff initiated this following an application that we received from a local business that ran into an issue with their current lease and had to relocate. And they were, you know, certainly when a business is forced to relocate, when they don't have a choice because of loss of a lease or some other unforeseen circumstance, they need to choose a new place or they go out of business. And so they may be looking in our town or other surrounding towns in order to continue their business. Our current BAP program really focuses on new businesses and businesses that are expanding. And it currently doesn't have provisions for businesses that are relocating but not expanding. So we are proposing an amendment to that section of the code that would allow a business that loses their lease or has any other unforeseen circumstance, and they're relocating, and they also happen to not be expanding with that relocation, that they could be eligible for BAP assistance as well. So that's the summary of what's proposed, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any clarifying questions for the director? Mayor Protem?
I have a couple. One, the assistance that we would give them would be the same level of assistance that a new business coming into town would get? Or would it be different?
Sure. You know, they would only, so there's different types of assistance. A lot of them are use tax and fee rebates. They would be eligible for those. Any type of sales tax, though, they'd have to demonstrate an increase in sales tax. So they may not be eligible for those, but they'd be eligible for the other incentives that we provide.
And if they wanted to get assistance for updating the facade on the new location, would that, or I guess that would go through the LRC, wouldn't it?
Yeah. So if they're within the urban renewal boundary?
Right.
We do have a program for facade upgrades.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I see no other questions. So, oh, thank you very much. Councilmember Most?
My apologies.
No reason to apologize. I have a hand waving at me, so I'm...
I'm gonna, you know me, I'm gonna make myself... Okay. My question is, can you clarify, Director Zuccaro, what an unforeseen circumstance includes?
Right. You know, we included that language because we realized that some businesses may be forced to move for something other than loss of a lease. Some examples that I've thought of is maybe the building that they're in is damaged or destroyed for some reason, fire, floods, you know, the sprinklers get set off, mold, you know, things like that. Those are the things I think we're trying to capture.
Okay, thank you. That's clear.
Thank you. Any other clarifications before we go to, okay. So we're going to go to the first round of public comments. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Please tell us your name, and if you're a resident of Lewisville.
Eric Lund, 901 Main Street, Lewisville Chamber of Commerce. Not a resident yet, but working on it. Just wanted to say that, you know, anything we can do to help keep businesses in our community is really critical. And I hope you guys will approve this. I think it's great that staff has made this recommendation. You know, we really want to keep our businesses here and not have them move to other communities. So I'm sure you guys get that. And just hope you all approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? All right, not seeing any. We'll go back to council questions and discussion. And this will be our first round of discussion and questions. Councilor Hamilton?
Do you have a question relating to the number of businesses in the past that we've lost due to an event such as this? Do we have any estimates?
I don't think we have any estimates. So Austin, yeah, so Austin's here this evening too with our Economic Vitality Department. We don't have that. We can certainly try to get that information. Just anecdotally, I'm not aware that it happens a lot.
Okay. So it's infrequent enough?
Yes.
That you can't remember the last time it happened?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. That's all.
Okay, I'm just going to take an opportunity to make a comment. When I was part of the Economic Vitality Committee, we actually discussed this. And I thought that this was actually part of the updates that we did to this program. So this is, to me, this is a catch-up item. You know, as the chamber director, you know, mentioned, attracting new businesses is a lot more expensive than retaining the current ones. And retention is very important. So, you know, this is something that I'm looking forward to supporting. Councilor Lay?
Yeah, I appreciate the comment that Councilmember Hamilton mentioned. I think the language that's there contains two qualifiers. Unforeseen circumstance, you know, suggests that if there's a lot of planning that went into something and it happened, that this is not going to apply. And outside the control of the owner-operator of the business is another one. So I'm pretty confident that this is, you know, a pretty good, strong, appropriate change to the ordinance. And I appreciate the, you know, the care that went into the language. So thank you.
All right, we'll go to the second round of public comments. Sherri?
Sherri Summer, 910 South Palisade Court. I just have a quick question. Is there any limit on the amount of money that a business can receive? Thank you.
So I'm going to defer to Mr. Brown, if he knows that. I actually don't have enough familiarity with the program in the past. I think it's, I don't know if there's a cap, but it's, I believe it's 50% of use tax and building permit fees and those types of things they're eligible for. But I'll let Mr. Brown fill in the rest.
Yeah, that's correct. So there's not currently a cap on the total rebate amount, but since it is rebate, it's based on the total, I guess, spend from the business within the city, 50% of that amount.
Thank you. Seeing no other public comment, we'll go to the, back to council for discussion. Councilor Lay?
Yeah, I think from the question, it's important for people to understand, I mean, we don't need to get into a really long discussion about BAPS, but the city doesn't give businesses money. That is not what a BAP is. It is a rebate of certain kinds of taxes in the event that the business actually performs and generates taxes in the course of their business. We don't, you know, there is no, there's no benefit to the business unless they are performing according to the agreement. A lot of other municipalities don't do that. They, you know, you've seen some kinds of municipalities that really do a lot, kind of maybe upfront, and some, it's controversial when you do that. But that's not the way we've done it here. So, but I'm going to, I'm going to support this. I think this is a narrow enough change that it's worthwhile.
Councilor Hefner?
Yeah, you know, I'm going to agree. And just, to me, this is sort of a common-sense update. That brings the language of the code sort of up to speed with the purpose of the code and for all the reasons that have been said. I think it's a good idea.
I'm going to take this opportunity. It seems like we're moving in the direction of supporting, so I'm going to close the public hearing. If anybody has any motions or additional comments at this point. Mayor Protem Fahey?
I would move that we approve Ordinance Number 1850, Series 2023, and ordinance amending section 3.24 of the Lewisville Municipal Code Regarding the Tax and Fee Business Assistance Program.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? Seeing none. City Clerk, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Fahey?
Yes.
Mayor Maloney?
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner?
Yes.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Councilmember Most?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously. We will move on to item C, Resolution Number 12, Series 2023, a resolution approving an amendment to the Centennial Heights final planned unit development regarding fence regulations. Are there any disclosures of council members?
Yeah, I just want to note for the record that I did hear this application when I was on planning commission, but I'll be making my decision tonight based on the evidence presented here. Thanks.
Thank you for that disclosure. Now, we'll open the public hearing and start with a staff presentation. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Lisa Ritchie, Planning Manager, here on behalf of the Centennial Heights residents, to consider Resolution 12, 2023, to approve a PUD amendment related to fence regulations. Public notice requirements were met per the municipal code. Little bit of background for you quickly. This neighborhood originally was approved for a PUD in October of 1990. In 1992, a fence amendment resolution was approved by City Council that made some minor modifications to the current fence requirements. During Marshall Fire, 39 of the 120 properties within this neighborhood were destroyed, along with a number of the fences that were previously in place. There is a current PUD, as I've mentioned, that regulates fences. This PUD regulates all fences to some degree within the Centennial Heights neighborhood. And as you probably remember, back in September, you all approved an ordinance citywide that exempts any property in the city where a PUD requires a wood fence to be installed in that portion of the fence that connects to the house. So they already have this exemption applied. However, during staff conversations with... with neighborhoods, during all of our recovery process, and fences have come up for this neighborhood as an area of concern, and something that they would like to actually amend their PUD, and we're gonna go into that in a minute. But I want to be really clear that staff is processing this application on their behalf, but this was a neighborhood-driven proposal. We do have representatives of the neighborhood here tonight who would like to share a few words just to confirm that. So getting into what is changing. On the cover sheet of the PUD, there are a few notes. I don't necessarily need to go into all of these unless you'd like. Some of them are changing, some of them are not. But again, they, essentially, what we're gonna be approving is a resolution that essentially replaces and supersedes any, any existing note on the PUD. And so there's gonna be a resolution that we record, and we're gonna attach to this PUD, and it basically says, you know, kind of, all of this now applies, these others all go away. So functionally, that's how that will work. More importantly, these are really kind of the design standards. So within the PUD, as noted, we've already amended out the little wing fences. The internal fence standards, which are kind of all of the fences that are not around the outside edge of the perimeter of the neighborhood, we're taking away the requirement for wood. So those homeowners are gonna have the option to install any fence design they like, consistent with the municipal code, which is essentially a four-foot tall fence in the front yard, a six-foot tall fence in the backyard. So that's giving individual homeowner authority for those internal fences. Along the perimeter of the neighborhood, that's where, you know, from a city's perspective, there is still, you know, kind of a citywide interest in what those perimeter fences look like in some circumstances. And so we worked collectively with individual neighborhood groups that abut these sections of fences. So these homeowners really had the opportunity to weigh in on these segments and decide for themselves their comfort level with combustibility, their design preferences, things like that. So just looking up at the screen, on the northern edge of the neighborhood, which is on the top, where it says remains unchanged, that property abuts the Louisville Rec Center. So if you can think of, when you look down at the Mulberry, that's gonna be down from the residential, or from the Recreation Center. The current, PUD currently requires a 42-inch high California chain link fence. Those neighbors are comfortable leaving that standard in place. Therefore, this remains unchanged. Let's swing around to the left side. This is the west side of the neighborhood. The PUD currently requires a six-foot cedar fence. And this previously was a perimeter fence when this PUD was established. Since that time, the Cherrywood II subdivision came in, and now directly abuts at that fence is no longer what we would consider a perimeter fence. It's not visible, so we're gonna remove that standard, and it would be subject to all of the same internal. They can just come in under the municipal code. Moving down around to the south, we have Century Dive and Dalia Place. The PUD requires a six-foot high cedar fence. That fence did not burn, and that fence is still in place. And so this PUD proposes to keep that standard in place. There is no fence standard surrounding fireside elementary, so there's really no change there. And then the final one are the dotted section. That's the east side of the property or the neighborhood that abuts the power line trail. So if you can think of kind of the power line trail corridor, those neighborhoods, they worked really hard, and we spent a lot of time working through this section. So a couple of things to note here. Currently, the requirement is a 42-inch high California chain link fence. Non-combustible fence design was very important to all of these property owners that participated in this. And so they really chose to self-regulate themselves to what we call a Class B fire rating. And that's a measurable standard that we talked a lot about at Planning Commission. That's not the highest Class A standard, but it does provide improved performance against fire than your typical wood fence. And so there are a couple of representatives of the Vista Lane here tonight who can, you can ask questions on. And so this was really their choice to regulate it that way. And then from the power line trail, the visibility of that fence, really, that's their only standard. They could have any fence up to six feet tall. It could be open, it could be solid. But when you look at the power line corridor, there's not a lot of consistency in that fence in the adjacent areas. So staff's not concerned with flexibility on design. And so with that, we are recommending approval of Resolution 12, sorry, should be 12, not X, and happy to answer any questions. And again, we have members of Centennial Heights here to speak to you as well.
Thank you. Any questions for the planner before we go to public comment? Seeing none, thank you.
Yeah.
So we're gonna go to the first round of public comments, and you have three minutes to let us know what you're thinking. And first up is William Johnson.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, and city staff. My name is William Johnson. I am a resident at 108 Vista Lane. At least I will be again. Here, rebuilding. I want to say first, thank you to you all for all your efforts through this recovery period. It's been exemplary from, from where I'm standing. So thank you for all that. And that's why we are here tonight as in response to the Marshall Fire. We actually did see with our neighbors the fire being commuted from one building to the next, actually through the fence line. So that is why we did request the fire rating aspect to the PUD be updated. In addition to that, we recognize that all of our neighbors have a varying degree of financial situations as, with respect to the, the Marshall Fire recovery. And therefore, we wanted to make the language of the fence in conjunction with the city's staff's recommendations to give enough flexibility for those who can afford to build back with a fence, they can do so, and address other safety concerns, such as the corridor being a wildlife corridor for coyotes and other animals of that nature, protecting house pets, and also allowing, for my family, we have a large breed dog, keeping her safe with a six-foot fence, more so than the original California fence, would allow her to actually escape quite frequently. So we would prefer that, you know, that six feet be, be kept in the language, and I thank you for your consideration. And if you have any questions, I'm allowed to answer them.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Next up, we have Rena Pomeroy.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having us and for opening this conversation into Lisa and the city staff for really engaging us in this conversation. Like Lisa mentioned, she has been discussing this topic with our neighbors so that we get to consensus. So I'm sort of representing, I'm Bill's neighbor, I'm at 112 Vista Lane, and I hope to be back soon as well. I'm representing the whole of Centennial Heights, since I'm not sure if anyone's online for public comment. So each of the three sections that Lisa discussed, we kind of got to consensus with the neighbors respectively. I think Vista Lane particularly, we met several times to make sure that we were really concrete about what it is that we were asking for, that we were actually asking for Class A or Class B. And we really wanted to make sure that, like Bill was talking about, like, that we got to the right place. I think this takes into consideration each of the spaces that are, are lots abut, right? The, the open space is different from Vista Lane. The, the folks who back up onto Cherrywood? Cherrywood are, have different considerations. And so I think what the city staff is recommending is exactly what we need right now, and hopefully we'll be able to get folks back with the right fences. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have a couple people on Zoom. First one would be Barney.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Your Honor, Maloney. And this, this is Barney. Tinas, I live on eight, or used to live on 821 Mulberry Street. We are rebuilding. And I just wanted to chime in and back up Rayna's comments and the, the prior speaker's comments. I apologize, I don't remember the name, that, yeah, we, we have worked through the process, we have consensus in the neighborhood, and I, I support, you know, this resolution moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Dave Barron.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. I'm also in the neighborhood, however, on the west side. So there's kind of the east side, the north side, and the west side, which are all changing as part of this request. On the west side specifically, in my backyard, sorry, my name is Dave Barron. I lived at 835 West Mulberry Lane in the cul-de-sac. On the west side of the neighborhood, myself and my neighbors also agree that changes need to be made, where currently the regulations require people to have six-foot wooden fences in their backyard. And as many of us have pictures and video evidence of that directly acting as a contributor to the fire, specifically igniting homes, you know, further and further down, down Mulberry Street. I also am very, very strongly in support of changing this requirement and not mandating that in our backyards. That's currently what the code is requiring. Now removing that would allow people to still install that if they're interested for aesthetic or financial reasons. But in our personal situation, we want nothing to do with wood anywhere near our property. So we may choose to use non-combustible materials, or some of our neighbors will choose to have no fences in their backyards and have it more of a open neighborhood feel. So on the west side of, of Mulberry, I just wanted to kind of speak up for my neighbors and say that we're also very much in support of this to allow us to have the flexibility, and most importantly, to no longer mandate materials in our backyards which contributed to the Marshall Fire. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the queue? All right. Thank you. That's, that ends the, the public comment. We'll move on to council questions, discussion. Well, I'm gonna jump in. I want to thank this, did you have a public comment?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Is it okay to back up? Sure. Well, I'll reopen the public comment, please. Sorry, didn't see you before.
Yeah, sorry for not signing up. Thank you for taking the time. My name is Ado. I live at 794 West Pinion Way, so not directly in, in the neighborhood, but around the corner. Just want to bring to your attention that the, the NIST, the National Institute of Standards and Technology, has done a lot of research on fire contributions, fence contributions to, to fires at the wildfire urban interface. There was a tremendous report, 400 pages long, just, just published two years ago, and it's available on the website. It's, if you type in NIST, Fence Fire Study, so N-I-S-T, Fence Fire Study, it's got really good information, including some recommendations. And so maybe the city would consider to add them to like the city newsletter or something like that, so people can consider some of these ideas. And three of the recommendations are like, don't put any sort of combustible mulch on the ground, like rubber or, you know, any sort of wooden mulch, that's really terrible. Building what they call good neighbor privacy fences, where neighbor A puts up their type of fence, neighbor B puts up his type of fence on the other side, so they get exactly what they want to see. That's terrible. And then also considering not having any wooden fences in areas that are considered exits. So there's some really good practical advices that maybe you want to bring to the attention of the community through the newsletter, so that people can consider this as they're rebuilding or changing whatever fences they have to prevent this from happening in the future. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that information. All right, we'll go, we're gonna now go on to council questions, comments. We have Counselor Most with her hand up.
I think that I'm gonna say partly what you were gonna say, Mayor Maloney, which is I just really want to thank staff for working in such a great way, cooperative way with our community members and finding consensus. It, it's just, it's, it's great to hear that. I know how hard the whole planning department has been working for more than a year now, and I just, you know, appreciate your efforts. And, and obviously, based on the comments we heard from the public, those efforts were really appreciated. So I think we all appreciate them as well.
Well, thank you, Counselor Most. You did take the words out of my mouth. The, the other thing I was gonna say, you know, it seems that coming up with a consensus in a neighborhood, thank you for facilitating those discussions. And it's something that fits within our municipal code. To me, this seems like a no-brainer. This is something that we need to support and move on so that the people who are rebuilding know what direction they can go. So with that, I'm gonna close the public hearing. And any discussion, motions?
Okay.
Mayor Protem Fahey.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I will agree, first of all, with what Counselor Most and Mayor Maloney just mentioned. The staff, I think, did a remarkable job in getting the community input and reaching consensus. That was, that's, and thank you as members of the public for participating in that discussion and actually being open to various issues, but, but coming to a consensus on what, what could be done. And so with that, I would move to approve Resolution Number 12, series 2023, a resolution approving an amendment to the Centennial Heights Final Planned Use Development Regarding Fence Regulations.
Second.
I guess you can pick your second there. All right, any discussion?
I just have one point of discussion, which is I hope planning staff will consider if there's an appropriate way to get the NIST report out to folks who might find it useful, especially if there's a condensed version that's not 400 pages.
Please.
If I may, Mayor, I just want to add for the neighbors, I just want to let you all know really how well they work together. It was really a joy and a pleasure to work with them, and they did all the hard work of coming together really open-mindedly and respectfully, listening to, listening to one another. And, you know, they really get the credit for working together on this. So just want to make sure that's clear.
Any other closing comments on this? We have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hefner?
Yes.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Fahey?
Yes.
Councilmember Most?
Yes.
Mayor Maloney?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. Now we move on to Item D, City Council Committee Appointments, and I will, you want me to read these? I will read them. City Council Economic Vitality Committee, Counselor Lay is Chair, Counselor Most, and Mayor Protem Fahey are members. The Finance Committee, the Chair is Counselor Dickinson, and the members are Counselor Hamilton and Counselor Hefner. The Corps of Communities for Climate Action is Mayor Protem Fahey. Communitying Solutions is Mayor Protem Fahey, with Counselor Most as the alternate. Consortium of Cities, Counselor Dickinson, with Counselor Hefner as the alternate. The DBA Street Fair Committee is Mayor Maloney. The Denver Regional Council of Governments, otherwise as Dr. Cog, is Counselor Hefner, with the alternate being Mayor Protem Fahey. Joint Issues Committee is Counselors Most and Hamilton. Revitalization Committee member is Counselor Lay. And the Rocky Mountain Airport, I can't remember what the other end, Roundtable, is Counselor Most, with the alternate as Counselor Hamilton. Do we have to approve that? Okay. All right, we're gonna move on to the next item. Ordinance Number 1851, series 2023, an ordinance amending Title 17 of the Louisville Municipal Code capping the maximum number of gasoline and automobile service stations located within the city of Louisville. And this is the first reading to set up for public hearing. Is there any discussion or action on that? Counselor Lay?
Just for the sake of getting it going, I guess, is there a presentation? I don't know.
No.
Okay. I move for the passage of Ordinance Number 1851, series 23, an ordinance amending Title 17 of the Louisville Municipal Code capping the maximum number of gasoline and automobile service stations located within Louisville.
Do I have a second?
So we're moving to set the public hearing at, on March 7, correct?
Actually, no. I was gonna suggest.
Did I interrupt you?
Pardon me? No, no, you didn't. I, I actually didn't, I was treating those as two separate steps. I think it depends. I think currently the, the date is on March 7. And I think the question is whether there is another date as soon after March 17 as possible might work. And I can kind of explain. I can kind of explain that. Let me find out what the...
The date next available after the 17th will be April 4, because you guys moved some meetings around in March.
Yeah. So that's what I would move for the public hearing to occur on April 4. April 4. Yeah, instead of March 7.
So City Clerk Howell, or City Manager, how solid is the calendar for April 4? You know, we have two items on there that could consume, one item that could consume the whole agenda. So the question is, do we push it farther out than that? So that would mean we push it into May or June.
I would say that this ordinance is related to an initiative we have, have to gather... There is an open initiative with the public at this point. They would be required to bring me signatures by April 22. So they have a hard deadline on that. So that's something to keep in mind in your conversation.
Thank you.
If we can get a second, we can have more discussion about this.
I'm not clear what the motion is.
Motion is to pass the first reading of Ordinance Number 1851 Series 2023, An Ordinance Amending Title 17 of the Louisville Municipal Code.
Well, it's, you've made a motion as written, right? So the question is, do we have a second so we can have a discussion?
Sure. I'll second the ordinance as written.
Okay. So I'll open discussion on this then.
Okay. Now, I'll raise the issue that I was going to raise before. On Friday last, we had a meeting of the Economic Vitality Committee of Council. One comment was raised about potentially having some input, not just the business folks, but people who are kind of stakeholders, who've been, I think, attending EVC, and having some discussion around this particular ordinance, and doing that in advance of a second reading. Why would I suggest as Chair to do that? There are a couple of reasons. One is, I think, we've got a number of different processes that are going right now. We've got, you know, we have a moratorium that's in place. We have an initiative that has begun. And we've got this particular ordinance that's before us tonight, not for any more action than scheduling it for second reading. The idea, I think, is that, one of the things that I have thought was lacking on issues like this, and I mean by that extraordinarily, issues that have been very divisive when we've dealt with them last fall particularly, I mean, this came up, and it was a, it was a hard, it was a hard issue to deal with then on the moratorium. I think that the chance of actually having people meet together and be able to talk to one another who are on different sides of the issue, or maybe able to help to improve or make a better potential ordinance for everyone, and then for us to be able to bring back suggestions, thoughts, conclusions as a result of that, it's a different process than we normally follow. And I think the challenge is, at least on this one, it's a pretty unusual place that we find ourselves in. And I've talked with a number of people, including the drafter of the initiative, about this, and he may, he may chime in. I hope he does. I think he's on the line. As a way of being able to...
There's no public comment on this. There's no public comment.
That's right. That's right. Anyway, to do that is the reason why I'd like to push the public hearing off until after March 17, which is our, our next meeting.
Councilor Most?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I guess I'm a little bit concerned about the idea that this is a particularly divisive, divisive or complicated or hard issue. I think we have divisive, divisive and complicated and hard issues that we deal with all the time. And our process for that is to have public hearings where people can make public comments. And so I'm not entirely comfortable with the notion that this particular issue is so unusual. And if it is, what our criteria would then be for saying, well, we have issues that are difficult or divisive or unusual, and so now we have to have public forums for discussion. You know, it's, it's, it seems to me that, you know, that gets very complicated, because we, there may be other issues that other people in the community feel very strongly about. And then rather than having our public hearing, which is what we do, we notice, we have public hearings, we have discussions, then we're talking about a different, different process for this particular ordinance. So I'm a little bit uncomfortable with that. And I also have to say that, well, yes, this was raised by one person, I believe, at the last EVC meeting. That's one person. And I think that generally we don't consider any one person in the town necessarily representative, you know, of the broader community. So I'm just a little bit uncomfortable with the idea that we're going to make this, this special. And if we are, then what are the criteria that we are using for this special ordinance versus the other ordinances that, that we evaluate and that we process? So I'm, I'm not comfortable with the idea that we're going to change the rules for this particular one in a way that, you know, that gives the EVC, which is one of our committees, kind of some additional process. And then what is, what's the upshot of that process? What's the outcome? Are we then going to make a recommendation? I don't, I don't think that's on a particular ordinance. I don't think the EVC necessarily has gone down that road. So I'm just, you know, I just don't understand the, what the rules that we apply, that we would then go change the process for this particular thing.
Thank you, Councilor Most. Councilor Hefner?
Yeah, thank you. I think I look at this mainly as a series of timing challenges. On the question of whether more input would be useful, I think I'm inclined sort of holding all else equal to say, yeah, more, more input is always going to be helpful. And I'd be curious to hear what comes out of an EVC discussion. As I understand it from the packet, our current emergency ordinance goes until the end of September this year. So it's not like we're in a big rush policy-wise to get something to, into effect. That said, as I understand from the clerk, signatures are due on the 22nd for the ballot initiative. And gathering signatures is time-consuming and expensive, and a big effort. And I think out of fairness to the initiative drafters and sponsors, it would be better if we could conclude our consideration of what I'll call a substitute or maybe compromise ordinance that we all do sometime long enough before their signature deadline that they know one way or another. April 4, I think, is probably cutting that close. I think the later dates in April are probably too late. But I'm thoughtful that we, on our consent agenda, canceled our March 28 meeting and could consider reinstating it to discuss this item.
Other discussion? Councilor Lay?
Yeah, there's a couple, couple of things, I guess I would say, Councilmember Most, I appreciate the issues that you raised. But I think they're all pretty easily addressed. This isn't a separate process. The process is the process. We have a first reading, we have a second reading, and a, and a public hearing. What this is, is an opportunity in addition to that, for this particular measure, to meet in an EVC hearing, which, or an EVC meeting, which is, is a lot more informal, where people are not confined to talking to us in serial form, and in the way that they do at a public hearing. This is a very unusual circumstance we find us, ourselves in. I'd be glad to limit it. You know, I mean, first of all, I believe that, I can't remember the name of the person who talked about it, but I know it was in the context of the New Deal, that, you know, state and local governments are laboratories of democracy. This is a good opportunity to actually try an experiment. And the experiment is to get folks who may be, maybe on different sides of the issue, to actually be able to talk with one another. I don't believe that's going to happen without, without some kind of forum to do that. And I think it's an opportunity, potentially, just like this measure is, as a way of potentially obviating the need to move forward. I think that's on the, on the initiative. It may not be something that folks who are in favor of the initiative want to move forward, if we're able to get a, a kind of good discussion going. And being able to provide a kind of honest broker kind of forum, I think, can be a really good thing. I am certainly willing, if I was pushed to it, to limit such a, I mean, to me, it's, it's a positive for the community, be able to come in and, and talk about such things. But I'd be willing to limit it to issues where there has been a moratorium, a, an initiative that's live and a, and a, and a draft ordinance concerning some of the same issues. I don't think that's going to happen again for some time. And I think it's a good opportunity for us to try to get people to talk to one another. And I'm glad that, the other comment that Councilmember Hefner made was, I think, an appropriate one, too, about the timing. I've, I had a discussion earlier today with Mr. Cooperman, who is one of those who's signed off on the initiative when it began, and he can speak for himself. I think one of, that process continues as it, as it may. I mean, this, what I'm, this is an opportunity to provide just another forum for having community discussion. But if we wanted to, and if my colleagues on the Economic Vitality Committee were available and staff were available, I suppose I have a special meeting of the EVC. I haven't talked to anybody about that, but that's, you know, a possibility. That's, that's what is currently between us and doing this before the 7th. It's just that we, we as an EVC don't meet again until the 17th. But that's a potential possibility, too, is just to move that date up. And I'm happy to enter, you know, to do that. I just don't know what staff's...
City Clerk?
You could set it for March 14, if you want to move your EVC meeting. Additionally, as Councilmember Hefner noticed, there were changes made to the March schedule. The March 21 meeting's been made as a special meeting. So it could be added to the March 21 meeting as a second item. The other item for discussion is boards and commissions.
Right. And, you know, I'm just going to make a few comments here. I mean, out of respect for the citizens who are working on the initiative, I think that it would be disrespectful to push too far into that April 22 timeframe. So we, I think we have to respect that. I wish we were having this discussion at the end of January and not at the end of February, because now we're in this crunch. And March 28, I believe, is spring break, so we won't have enough staff to really have a meeting that week. Thank you for the, the idea, but I just don't think that works. I mean, we could move it to March 21, although I think that's a very significant discussion. And I would like to keep it to that one item. We don't really have that much on March 14. So we could, right? Nothing that's not on our advanced agenda. So we could push it another week. And that's not exactly what you're asking for. But if we want to have another auxiliary discussion that maybe brings some of these different opinions together, I just feel like we're in a crunch period as far as timing here and respecting the initiative process. Other thoughts? Councilor Most, your hands up again, and then we'll go to...
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So one of the things that I would caution against is that Mayor, Mayor, Councilmember Lay said this is a divisive issue. So implicit, I think, in that divisiveness is this sort of separation between potential business and, and residents that are really advocating strongly for sustainability. And so then I would question why the EVC would be a, quote, honest broker, because the charter of the EVC is to attract, retain, and advocate for businesses. So if we were going to do a community discussion, then I would say that it's not, and I'm a member of the EVC, and I think the EVC has an important role in the community, and we have an important job to do, but it's not clear to me that in this case, the EVC would be considered neutral. And so I think that could be problematic, too. So if we were going to facilitate some kind of community discussion, I don't, I don't see the EVC as being the necessarily appropriate place for that to happen.
Mayor Protam Fahy?
Thank you. Yes, I am thinking about what we just heard from the neighborhood group who got together and, in a very civil and cooperative manner, came up with a consensus on what they would like to see done. I think that if we postpone this particular discussion until the 21st or the 28th, whatever we can work into the schedule, it would give the EVC, and perhaps in conjunction with the Sustainability Board, the ability with staff to come up with some kind of consensus on what would work and what would satisfy the people who are, are working on the, the signatures for the moratorium, or for the ban. And so I would be, I would be willing to postpone the discussion until a group discussion could be held, and then they could present to us, both sides, with perhaps a compromise.
Thank you. Councilor Hamilton?
You took the words right out of my mouth. I wanted to comment that we just saw a demonstration of successful facilitation and consensus. So I think what's really important here is facilitation of this event meeting, whatever we shall call it. I would actually suggest maybe a neutral third party to take into account what was just mentioned, and also the importance of the timing as well. So I am always in favor of more discussion, civil productive discussion. And I think what's really important here is the forum in which it happens.
I'm agreeable to that kind of proposal. Thank you.
You're, you just said you're agreeable?
Yeah, to the, to the joint, I think, the joint committee proposal.
Okay. So right now, we have a motion to approve this and a second. Does someone want to make an alternate motion or a friendly amendment? Mayor Protam Fahy?
I would make an amendment to the proposal that we change the date to, from March 7 to March 21.
Is there, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Councilor Most? Councilor Most?
That's awfully close, right? How much time are we, are we then, are we then giving the initiative folks?
Well, if, if you don't mind me talking for a second here, they can gather signatures now. The deadline to turn them in is April the 22nd.
The one thing I, I would say about that being close is the EVC meeting is at 1:00 on Friday, and the packet for the meeting on Tuesday has to be posted by 5:00. So they'll need to be, whatever comes out of EVC will have to be put together post-haste.
City Manager, your thoughts?
You're asking a lot, I think. But we do have, it looks like LSAB is, the regular meeting would be on the 15th, excuse me, EVC would, the regular meeting would be on the 17th. To the Clerk's point, I would suggest maybe considering moving EVC to March 10th. That would give us one more week to put, you know, the recommendations and so forth into your packet. So you had that for the March 21st meeting. And you around, Austin, are you around? So at least the three of us are available for that.
Councilor Most?
So I'm confused now. We're still talking about the EVC, because again, I, that doesn't sound like a, if we're talking about LSAB and EVC, we're talking about two conversations? Or, I'm just trying to understand, I guess that's not necess, well, there's moving pieces, so we have to think about it all together. But it sounds like we need something that isn't necessarily one or the other.
The, the mention of LSAB came from the City Manager. Let's let him answer that question.
Yeah, I was hearing your conversation about LSAB and EVC. The concept of having a facilitator for the whole community on this thing, that's, that's, with the fence conversation, that was a much smaller audience, more manageable to facilitate this conversation. We're talking about potentially the whole community. So, I mean, if, we could do an open house of some sort and have a conversation there that's kind of in a neutral environment, and people could come in, we could put something together on that, kind of a realm. Rob, you have any other ideas?
Not really any other ideas, just more of a process comment, too. This, this is an amendment to the zoning code, so our, our ordinance does require that Planning Commission make a recommendation on this as well. We have taken the ordinance to Planning Commission. There is a recommendation coming out of it. So it's just, it's, it's complicated. There's all these time constraints. So I think it's, it's just diff, it's difficult. I'm, I don't have a great solution, but I just wanted everybody to be aware of that step in the process also.
That's already happened.
Already happened, with the current draft of the ordinance that was there for first reading.
Right. You know, I, I appreciate the energy around copying or plagiarizing the success about, around the fence thing, where people who are, who are really traumatized came together and came up with solutions they could all agree upon. This seems to needs to follow our process. Regardless of the date, it seems like we need to be addressing this ordinance that came through the Planning Commission. If we delay it because we have other conversations, does that change the ordinance? And then, based upon your comments, if it changes, it needs to go back to Planning Commission, or we have to change it here.
Well, I, I think we could keep moving in this direction, but I think a more appropriate approach is that, you know, you have the ordinance in front of you. It's gone on first reading. I think anybody can make a recommendation, including LRC or EVC. They can make recommended changes, but it might be appropriate to, you know, view the ordinance as drafted and then just get their input. And of, you know, as with any ordinance, you can make changes during your hearing based on different recommendations. That might help preserve the process a little bit.
Councilor Lay?
Yeah, I, I, I think that's, to me, the issue is providing fora for people to interact. I think the, the perfect is the enemy of the good here. The good is getting people who don't talk to one another or who tend to be talking to us in the course of a public hearing, which is a good thing, going to happen, can't help but happen. But getting them to talk beforehand, we could do, I mean, we could do something with another committee. We could, you know, I think there's nothing wrong with doing, you know, providing input after the EVC meeting. I'm just, I'm providing that or I'm suggesting that as an alternative. This is, you know, Councilor Most, I'm surprised, actually, at your comment, because one of the things you've suggested is EVC is something that is, something involves the entire community and not just business interests. So it's not, this isn't a matter of representing only, that this, this ordinance and this issue targets a particular industry. I mean, it does have some impact on business, and there, to the extent that we're, we're dealing with moratoria and so forth like that, I think there's, there's a reason for, there's a rational reason for bringing it to EVC. It may not be the only place, but that's, there's nothing wrong with doing that. And I think, I don't want to get in the way of a public hearing process by any means. But public hearings, we all know, are, somebody stands at the microphone and talks to us. They do not talk to one another. And this is an opportunity to do something, just something slightly different. I mean, if people don't want to do it, I get it. I think it's a, it's an opportunity, actually, that's different than what we normally do and that may end up potentially creating energy and a decision that'll help us all resolve this without a whole lot of extra process. But I mean, if the sense of the council is not to do it, I guess that's fine. I just think it's an opportunity for people to talk with one another. And I am skeptical that they're going to talk with one another without that sort of forum. It's not the same as a community, a neighborhood meeting. I think there's, there's, it's just tougher. It's a wider group of people that are involved, and, I don't know, I think it's a, I think it's a good opportunity, but I'll leave it to others.
Thank you. Councilor Most?
Just quickly, I, I, I agree that we have to, EVC should be thinking about the whole community, but our purpose is really to primarily attract, retain, and advocate for businesses. So my only question was to the point of being a quote, "honest broker" or a neutral party. I don't think EVC is necessarily perceived that way. So if we're going to facilitate an open discussion, and again, my question is, so which issues that we take up in the city of Louisville this year are we going to do this with? You know, I, I just think that it's not our normal process. And so, you know, we already have heard from the Director of Community Development that, you know, this has been the planning, and so it just seems like we're in the middle of the process and we're trying to change the process. Now, I don't object to changing processes, and I don't object to having clearer rules, and I certainly don't object to more community discussion, but I think we have to have some clarity around what our processes are. And I think, as the mayor said, we're sort of two steps into this thing. And, you know, with, I, I agree with my fellow councilmembers that, yes, there, there are times when, you know, more information and more community interaction. And certainly, Councilmember Lay, I think we should have a lot more community action, interaction on a lot more issues, that, that the one-way communication that we have in hearings isn't always adequate to the task, but that's our process. So that, for me, this is somewhat of a process issue and, and where we are in it. And, and, you know, if we're going to facilitate what is perceived as neutral, a neutral process, then we have to really focus on what that means and how we do it. And I, I think there's a lot of complexity, and I think we're, we're sort of, again, two-thirds of the way through this and trying to back-engineer it. So I have some concerns about that.
Thank you, Councilor Most. Councilor Heffner?
Yeah, just briefly, back to the motion at hand, I think we just have a motion to change the date. And if I heard Director Zucaro correctly, we can kick the date by two weeks, give EVC and LSAB the opportunity to discuss and weigh in as they see fit or don't see fit, and then have the meeting we are going to have on the 21st, or have the meeting we're going to have on the 7th on the 21st, and move forward with our usual process. It's almost, it's almost akin to just sort of an extended written comment deadline, and we're going to be accepting comments from a couple important city committees as well as members of the public. And I, I just don't see a lot of harm there.
Other comments? So as Councilor Heffner stated, we have the ordinance where we've made, there's a friendly amendment to change the dates to March 21st, 2023. Are we ready to vote on that? We have a roll call vote, please.
Wait, what are we voting on?
We're, we're voting on the ordinance as written. There's a friendly amendment to change the date to set the public hearing to March 21st, 2023.
So we're, we're voting on all of that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you for asking for clarification.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Mayor Maloney?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Heffner?
Yes.
Councilmember Most?
No.
Mayor Protem Fahey?
Yes.
So the motion passes 5-1. Thank you very much. Next, we're going to move on to the executive session. This is for real property acquisition and deposition, Home Rule Charter Section 5-2C and CRS 2464024A. The City Manager is requesting the City Council convene an executive session for the purpose of real property acquisition concerning properties in Louisville, only to the appraisal and other value estimates. City Attorney?
Sorry, Mayor, I'll need a moment. I'll need just one moment to find my script.
Okay. Sorry to catch you off guard.
Very sorry. Yeah. Should have it in my emails. Here we go.
What? Executive session? No.
I apologize for that delay. I didn't save it to my device after I sent it. So as noted on the meeting agenda, the City Manager is requesting an executive session for the purpose of discussing real property acquisitions and dispositions pursuant to Section 5-2C of the Home Rule Charter and CRS Section 2464024A, specifically as to appraisals and other value estimates and strategy. Prior to entertaining any motion, the City Clerk will read a statement required by the City Code.
It is the policy of the city to conduct public business in meetings open to the public. While in executive session, it is inappropriate to take straw votes, keep minutes, or make any final decisions. It is the duty of each councilmember to ensure executive sessions are conducted in strict compliance with this ordinance, state and federal law, and any applicable provisions of the state and federal constitutions. If at any time the scope, nature, or parameter of this executive session goes beyond the publicly stated topic, it's the responsibility of the council to terminate and cease any further deliberation within the executive session and return to the public meeting. Only those topics described in City ordinances may be discussed in an executive session. Those topics are summarized as follows. Where federal or state law requires the information being discussed remain confidential, certain personnel matters involving only employees directly appointed by the City Council and other personnel matters upon request of the City Manager or Mayor, consideration of real property rights and real, consideration of water rights and real property acquisitions and dispositions but only as to appraisals, value estimates, and strategy, and legal consultation with an attorney representing the city with respect to pending litigation.
Regarding the authority for the executive session, Section 5-2C authorizes an executive session for the purpose of discussing real property acquisitions and dispositions but only as to appraisals and other estimates of value and strategy. An executive session for these purposes is also authorized by the Open Meetings Law, Section 2464024A of the Colorado Revised Statutes. The request involves discussion of a request for the sale of city-owned property and discussion of possible purchase of property located within the city. With that, Mayor, you may entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Thank you. I move to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing real property acquisitions and dispositions but only as to appraisals and other estimates of value and strategy. An executive session for these purposes is also authorized by the Open Meetings Law, Section 2464024A of the Colorado Revised Statutes. The request involves discussion of a request for the sale of city-owned property and discussion of possible purchase of property located within the city. With that, Mayor, you may entertain a motion to go into executive session. Thank you. I move to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing real property acquisitions and dispositions, and that the executive session also include City Manager Jeff Durbin, Deputy City Manager Megan Davis, Planning and Building Safety Director, shouldn't that be Community Director Rob Zuccaro, Economic Vitality Specialist Austin Brown, and City Attorney Kathleen Kelly. Could I have a roll call? I have a second?
Second.
Have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yeah.
Councilmember Most?
Yes.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Councilmember Heffner?
Yes.
Mayor Maloney?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Fahey?
Yes.
Okay, the, the motion passed, so we will adjourn to executive session.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner?
Yes.
Mayor Maloney?
Yes.
Mayor Portemfehie?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes, so we will adjourn to executive session.
The City Council is back from the executive session and I'll give a report. We looked at -- oh, I'm sorry.
All right, I think it's in the Charter that I have to do it. But you may add anything to my brief report. Mayor and council, as noted on the meeting agenda, the executive session was for the purpose of discussing real property acquisitions and dispositions and the City Council had such discussion.
Thank you, City Attorney. Next we'll move on to the City Attorney's report.
And I have no report this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Next item is council comments, committee reports and identification of future agenda items. Do any council members have any reports or future agenda items? All right. Staff has requested we like direction from council at the meeting next week regarding the transportation funding. As directed -- as direction can only be given at a regular or special meeting, can I make a motion -- I'm going to make a motion -- to make February 28th a special meeting rather than a study session? A second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any other council comments, committee reports? All right. With that, we're adjourned.[1788.64][1788.64](end of transcript)
(end of transcript)